I'd like to invite Aldo Petronio to join me. When I last left you, I believe it was the end of July. We were being very conservative as the legislature had not finished their budget. They didn't finish up until the 31st and, I don't know, Mayor, I think I heard it went well up to midnight.
Yeah, actually, a little bit after.
After, you know, they worked very hard. I know our legislative delegation worked very hard. We paid very close attention to the formula under Chapter 70 and the Foundation Budget Review Commission recommendations. I am disappointed, but I am hopeful, I am very hopeful, that a lot of work has been done that will not be wasted. I think voices were loud and clear. I think Brockton had one of those voices, you know, to make sure that the legislature understands we're not going anywhere. So, we are going to be here. I think the advocacy has made a difference, you know, for our students and our families, and we will continue to do that advocacy. So, I've asked Mr. Petronio to come and share with you some good news. And as you remember, I hate to go back to last year, but it was very difficult trying to count on what we call "pothole funds" or different amounts of grants, and many of those things never came through. And we've actually fared a little bit better this year. Again, we're being very cautious, but we do have some good news. So, Aldo, would you like to?
Correct. As the superintendent said, the advocacy has worked because as the numbers are coming through, we're actually getting emails or phone calls in Brockton letting us know because, you know, they know we're on top of it and want to know what's going on. And I think they're actually probably trying to appease us a little bit, maybe slow us down. But even so, even with the amounts of money that are coming through, it's still, we're still way behind where we should be for a school district like this. So, when the budget was passed, the House figure of $1,003,000 was adopted, the Senate number of additional $2.1 million, that pretty much as it stood was adopted. We also, they tweaked the formula so that we got a little more money back on the charter school money that was paid out. So, in the end, we ended up with about $3.2 million more in overall Chapter 70. The good thing about that is that's our Chapter 70. That figure continues every single year. You know, we've never dropped below, we've always gone up from that number. So, that number gets added to our current Chapter 70. In the same time, they put together a pothole fund called Transitional Relief. It was for districts who had been harmed by the changeover to direct certification, you know, the undocumented students, basically. So, in that fund, it was about $12 million. Out of all the communities in the Commonwealth, I think nine or 10 received funds, Brockton being the highest. So, we picked up this transitional money of $2.9 million. So, combined those two have brought in some real money, put us back, not where we were, but put us back in the game, I guess is a good way to say it. So, with those monies coming through, we've sent the request to the mayor because that money now has to be appropriated by the city council because the budget has passed, it's already gone through, so now we'll need a supplemental appropriation to receive those funds. And in anticipation of that, the superintendent, the executive team put together priorities of what we need to open schools. So, on the budget parameter on the very front page, in the green section, you'll see $3.299 million in the green box. That's basically what is available, I think, from those additional funds, again, because we hedged against a lot of that money coming in. We kind of put a stay on the number of pink slips we put out there so that we wouldn't have to pay unemployment all summer in hopes that we get them back. So, we have about that much left. And on the very last page is the priorities that we've listed, at least priorities for the next two weeks in order to get schools open. We're looking at class sizes, we're looking at how we've moved students, you know, from north out to other schools, and how we have to resituate the district. So, in there, what you'll see first is, because I used the figure of 42,000 for every person that was laid off, anybody we called back prior to school ending, there was no unemployment costs. And then in July, we called back 14 positions the committee approved. So, they were paid unemployment for about five weeks at that point. So, I put a factor in for those 14 positions, the five weeks. And then tonight, if we decide to call back some more, I put a factor in this list of priorities to cover again from the last week of June all the way to almost the last week of August in paying the unemployment costs for those positions going back in. And then the rest of the list is, I guess, you know, we can explain, you know, elementary, the middle, music teacher, all of those positions and why they're necessary.
Thank you, Aldo. So, let me take over from there, and I'll be glad to answer any questions. When I last left you, we had money, as Aldo said, we kind of hedged our bets. We brought back at that point 14 positions. We felt assured of money coming in. When we do talk about the pothole fund, it's, again, transitional relief. We don't know if we're going to get that every year. As a matter of fact, last year we didn't. This year, the formula benefited us. So, you know, just to make sure that everyone understands that. But what I am requesting, and this is simply to open the doors in September, and these are positions that have been thought out, and we went over them last time. I've put them in color-coded them. If you look at 1 through 8, these are elementary positions. You see the zone of the city, and you see a rationale and a reason why. Most of it has to do with large class size, and that was done by strategically, when we did cut teachers, remember, we originally sent out about 101 pink slips, but out of that 101, it was just over 65, 70 that were real reductions at that time. So, that being said, I need these positions back to open the doors in September. When you look at the middle schools, which is in a salmon color, we are watching the registrations and also the reassignment of students where we have taken the 6th grade out of north and have been distributed through the remaining middle schools. So, as you look at that, you'll see a social studies position, an ESL position. The guidance position itself, we had a shared position last year because of the $16 million deficit. With that many students, I need a full-time guidance position at south, which will also leave a full-time guidance position at the Davis now where that had been a split this past year. Again, east is going to get, I'd like to recommend a full-time Spanish teacher, and that will eliminate a split with north, and north and Plough will actually split a Spanish teacher. At west, we have really a lot of increased enrollment, over 55, more than we projected at this point in time in grade 6, which I need a social studies and a science teacher. I've also had conversations with a number of you, certainly with Mr. McCrina, who's very concerned about the instrumental program. So, with that money coming in, and it allows us to continue our 4th grade and 5th grade instrumental program district-wide, so I'd like to recommend bringing back one instrumental teacher. I put down other priority positions, and I think Aldo has on here five reserved teaching positions. We will not meet again as a group. We do not have a finance committee meeting scheduled, nor do we have another school committee meeting until actually the 5th of September. So, again, it doesn't mean we have to spend that money, but I would like to put in reserve the possibility of five additional teaching positions. Those would be classroom positions if, in fact, enrollment was large or we needed to bring back, and again, this is not for, at this point, necessarily counselor. It would be for teaching positions to open the door. The other thing that you had asked me at the last meeting, you do see on here substitute teachers. Remember, we took money out of that substitute teacher budget that has to be put back in in order to run our district. We also have 10 permanent subs up at Brockton High School that has worked very well for that large environment with close to 250 teachers. You know, having a lot of teachers out, if you have permanent subs in the building, they can support the building in a number of ways. We actually did that a couple of years ago, if you recall. I'd like to continue that. That comes out of that substitute budget. The other thing that you talked about, and the principals have talked about, paras and MTAs. I've put a cer-- excuse me, a certain amount of money aside at this point. I may need more in the end, but to at least start school, I'd like to look at, and you see paras, MTAs, because I will let the principals choose what they need. One of the things you'll see, I wrote there compliance, what we did last year because we were so short-staffed. If you happen to have special education classrooms in your school that had substantially separate class, an inclusion class that had an additional para or MTA in the class, many times they were pulled if we ran short of support we needed in the building. And that really, again, was something that was a concern for compliance of people that need to be in our special needs classes. So, hopefully, that also will support the principals in having additional staff onboard. I'd like to wait on other items. I will tell you, we're looking to do a curriculum audit this year. I know there's professional development. I know there are curriculum materials we're looking at. I know there was concern brought forward about intramurals, about sports, about programs for kids. But I would like to wait till we open the doors on September 5th, and there is probably about another million put aside. We're in negotiations. I mean, there are a number of things going on that we'd like to actually be able to have time to discuss and set as priority items once we're able to open the doors. So, that is my request.
Open up the floor. I've got a few questions, but I'll defer to the other members first. Ms. Asak.
Just a quick question. Can we get some numbers as far as the middle school for Ashfield, the Plough, the east? Just to see the overflow with the renovations that are going on for the north. I'd like to look at those numbers.
Okay, I have numbers as of now. I can pass them out to you. The one thing I was concerned about is we continue to register. So, these are numbers as it stands today. So, we have, do we have copies more than me? Why don't I pass those out so you'll at least get a chance to see where we stand today?
Thank you.
Thank you. While we're getting these, I'll throw in a quick question for the superintendent. Superintendent, prior to these recalls that you're proposing tonight, how many unfilled teaching positions that have, how many rifted teaching positions still remain? Not necessarily bodies, but positions.
Yep. Okay, so, we had 46 when I was given back the 14. They have been recalled. That left us with 32. So, presently, you have 32 reduction enforced positions in this budget cycle.
And so, if we--
And we still have a number, Mayor, you asked that, of do-not-fills, and they're still out there. So, I want to say there were 13 do-not-fills.
Okay.
So, I don't know if you want to add that to the 32. You do have about 13.
So, coming in right now, then, 32 remaining rifted teaching positions, and you're proposing to bring 20 of them back tonight.
I was proposing to bring back 15--
15, 15 with the 15 plus 5.
--and let me have five on reserve if, in fact, and I would let you know if, before school opened, that we had to bring a teacher onboard where, as I said, this is when it gets very busy. You're seeing it. If you goodbye on Wednesday night, tomorrow night, you'll see people out the door at the parent information center. So, the last two weeks before school begins is when we see large numbers.
Okay. Joyce, you still have the floor. I was just trying to fill in the time while you were looking at that.
Looking at the numbers. I just wanted to just see what the overflow was and how they were dispersed to the other schools at the middle school level.
Okay.
Because we definitely want to keep an eye on classroom sizes as we have been all along. I'm just absorbing this.
So, it looks like, it looks like five of those six middle school teaching recalls are specifically to address class size, if I'm reading that correctly.
Yes. Yep, the guidance was, again, increased enrollment in the school. ESL was a compliance mandate, social studies enrollment. The Spanish, as I said, it had been a split between, I believe, east and north. The numbers are so high at east, I need a full-time Spanish to be able to meet the needs there. And that would leave north and Plough to split, have a Spanish teacher split. So, it's adding an additional Spanish teacher. And the west numbers really surprised us. You know, you were talking an additional 55 students already beyond what we projected in the 6th grade alone. So, that is going to be an additional cluster of science and social studies.
I'm sorry, were they all of them or not?
Some of it is, a good amount of it is. I mean, all your, as you're looking at those numbers, you know, again, you're taking over 200, 250 students that were dispersed, you know, throughout the remaining middle schools.
Okay. Aldo, if I could, if you could recall, what was the original substitute teacher line item, and then how much did we hit it for during the budget process, and what's left in there before we put this $600,000 back?
My original budget, I think, was $1.4 million. I think the superintendent cut that down to about $1.2 million. Then from that $1.2 million, we cut out $650,000. So, because right now, the budget is 588. So, that's why I added back $600,000 because this past year, we got by with a little bit over a million, almost $1.1 million. So, we--
And this would put you right back, right around $1.1 million?
Yes. This was almost $1.2.
Okay.
So, and attendance is something that we're working on. We're trying to improve it so that we don't have so much.
So, in terms of the lines, MTAs and paras, ballpark $400,000, how many positions being recalled would that approximately equal?
That would be anywhere from 12 to 18. Well, it, neither salary is that high, but it depends on if, a lot of times, the benefits are more than the salary. So, as you're hiring, paras back, let's say a para runs you about $18,000. If they then need a family plan for insurance, it's another $20,000. So, if you hire them back and they don't take health insurance, you can actually hire another para. So, that's why it's, you never know who you're going to hire, and you don't ask that question. So, it's as we start filling the positions, how much money there is, how far it goes. And MTAs are a little bit more, they're probably about $22,000, $23,000.
So, system-wide, that only brings back about 15 or 20 ballpark numbers?
Ballpark, yes.
Yeah.
And again, the money that you put aside for teachers, we don't use that. We'll, I just want to be able to open doors with teachers and classrooms.
I get it.
But we'll use that. That'll be the discussion we'll continue to have. And as I said, you still have money in there.
Yeah.
The principals are back Monday finally, so we'll be able to have these discussions with them.
So, going back to your big numbers, Aldo, in essence, between the additional Chapter 70 and the pothole funds, we realized about $6 million.
Yes.
Over the course of the summer, we had already committed about $3 million of that towards the opening of schools. Is that fair to say?
A little, a little less than $3 million.
Okay.
Yes.
So, it leaves us a little--
Oh, no, because we did, we did commit almost $3 million because we used the--
Yes.
We hedged the substitute teacher money.
Once we saw the numbers, it took some money out of--
No, I'm just trying to school over the big numbers with the committee. So, that leaves about, little over $3 million, of which we're proposing to spend $2.1. So, that would leave us about, theoretically, about $1 million remaining for expenditure coming into the current year.
Correct.
You know, one of the things I'll bring up to the committee is something that always ends up being a topic every year, and that's middle school sports and intramurals. I think the middle schools really took a beating in this budget process, and I don't think there's a more critical grade level for us to make sure we have after-school programming, whether it's sports or other after-school programming. So, I think, and I asked the superintendent for some, some numbers in the interim, I think to put intramurals back at all three levels and to reinstate middle school sports as we used to know them. It's about $250,000 using a round number? Is that in the ballpark, Aldo?
250, 260, yes.
Okay. So, I would really like the committee to consider that because I think the after-school programming for middle schools is critical.
I'm actually meeting Mr. Thomas, and I spoke with Nick Lee, who runs intramurals and middle school sports about this already. So, we're working, I've been working with them on that. So, we'll probably have something by the next meeting. Because this is, we have an opportunity to do something much better than what we had before.
Okay.
So, I think that this is a great chance to improve what we had previously because there was some, there was some issues with some of the sports that we had and the way we were doing it. So, I think we could do something really great for the kids and for the system.
Okay. So, you'll bring back a proposal for the next meeting with the price tag on it before we run out of money?
Yeah.
So, it's probably going to be in that ballpark $250,000 range? Are you too soon to say?
Yeah, I mean--
That was, I think, already, taking into account--
I got those numbers, too.
--some money we already had in the budgets. I think there's about $100,000 already in the budget now.
Yep, it's about $97,000 for the hybrid model.
$97,000, right.
Yep.
Okay. All right, so, I mean, I'm okay with putting that over to the next meeting, but I just want to get it on the table because as much as we desperately need personnel back, we also need to restore some programming also. Let me see if I hit anything else. Oh, I'm sorry, Mark, go ahead.
I'm glad to see that we've got, wow, that was loud, some money on here for paras, and I agree with the middle school sports because the middle school level's taken a big hit. But also, with the remaining funds there, I would like us to consider actually bringing some more MTAs and paras back. I've been hearing that all year, even at the staffing levels we had last year. With these classroom sizes, we need more, so they needed more paras last year. So, I'd like us to consider putting some money in with the remaining million for, for that again, on top of those $400,000.
Would the school committee like to commit, consider doing a finance meeting before the first day, first day of school, last week of August? Would you be willing to do that?
Absolutely.
Just to maybe get a chance to meet with you one more time prior to, so, maybe that last Tuesday, the 28th, if people want to check their calendar. Think you'd be okay with that?
Yep.
Because I think that if the finance committee offered some guidance that night, we sit as a committee of the whole, I think the superintendent could implement steps pending final approval on the night of the first day of school. I just think I, and we certainly appreciate, Superintendent, the position you're in. You're trying to get schools open for the first day of school. But you might be able to update us, you know, specifically about what we still need to deal with coming down the final stretch of that final week. All right, so if everyone's okay with that, what if we do a finance on Tuesday, the 28th? Okay? So, it'll break the news to Tom. Can everyone make six?
Yeah.
Okay. 6 o'clock at the Arno. Okay with you?
Yes, I, along with, I need the teaching positions now.
We're going to do it right now.
Oh, good.
Yep. Okay, any further discussion on the $2.1 million in proposed expenditures? Yep, go ahead, Mr. Gormly.
Number seven, you didn't go into, Department Head for SPED.
Yep. Could you talk about that?
You didn't talk about that. I'm not--
I'm sorry, which one are you on?
Number seven. Not quite sure where we add--
Department Heads.
Department Heads.
Oh, yes. One of the things that we did, we actually had an administrator resign from the Brockton Public Schools, went to another school district, a big loss for us. And at that point, I had a do-not-fill because of the budget being the way that it was. What happens every year is we have to have a match for the grant money that comes in in special education. We presently have, I believe, three other department heads. This fourth one would be the local match. So, you're putting other monies at risk. I always knew I would have to fill this, but I was waiting till the last minute to do that. So, I am requesting that it's the Department Head of our therapeutic support team. So, again, very important to all of the schools. It's the former Vinnie Cersei position.
Good, Mr. Gormly?
Yeah, I'm good.
Sorry.
Superintendent, how many custodians do we still have?
I know that Mr. Thomas, Deputy Superintendent Thomas, is looking to bring back four, but we were looking at overtime money, some money that were, that was being spent in the overtime budget.
Yes, Mike, Thomas, and Ken Thompson are working through the overall plan of coverage and looking at how they can basically, if they had four more custodians, whether they put them permanent or floaters, how they can basically take the money from unemployment and cover that cost.
Between unemployment, from overtime.
I mean, from overtime.
That would be, actually, I guess, or theoretically, would be from both, right?
Yes, it would be from both.
Yeah. So, could we bring something back for us on the 28th on that also?
Yes.
Actually, I think Mr. Thomas would like to try and move quickly on bringing four back so that we can stop paying unemployment--
Okay.
--since it's not going to require any new money.
So, you're telling us you think the four can be brought back without taking a hit on this?
Yes.
Okay. Well, if that's the case, I don't see why we would wait then. We'll just put it on right now. I just, Superintendent, I think we've supported you all the way on trying to get teachers back in the classrooms.
I appreciate it, thank you.
But I do think it takes other people to run the school system, too. And, you know, we, you know, got to serve lunch, got to have clean classrooms, need administrative assistants and people like that. So, as we're getting towards the bottom of the well here, I'd feel better if we make sure we're looking at all those positions also. So, if the committee, unless anyone has any objection, what if we add on a number 10 here that says recall four custodians, and we'll just put a net cost of zero, assuming that between unemployment savings and overtime savings, we can make the numbers work? Am I describing that fairly, Aldo?
Yes, correct.
It's the best deal we're going to get all night?
Mm-hmm.
But I agree, if there's no big cost to it, if the cost is minimal, why not have those people in the schools a week before school opens, getting the schools ready for us? Any further discussion on the superintendent's priority callbacks? Ms. Plant.
I'm sorry, just have one question.
Can you have all you want?
Thank you. The pre-K classes, I know it's not directly related to the FY '19 priorities, but I see it here listed on our roster of attendance. We have 54 pre-K so far.
Correct.
And so, due to that number, is it currently only being housed at the Raymond?
At the Arno.
At the Arno, okay.
Two classes at the Arno. They're kind of in little PK, you see them up there. It's very hard to read this.
Yeah, I see it, I'm just reading it wrong. I'm only seeing it under--
Our other place of expansion would be the Downey. So, we think when people start to, again, remember, once we get school up and going, people will begin to focus on kindergarten. Still, the numbers become larger there, and we're working with a number of organizations. Our goal was hopefully to get up to about 100. So, we are prepared that if need be, we would be up to 100. And that could be, if those numbers are large, then we would need to commit additional. And again, remember, it's half-day.
And how many teachers do we have in this program? I'm sorry?
Presently, we have, I believe, two preschool teachers hired.
Okay. And do you feel that everybody who's going to register for this year is registered? Do you foresee having to make any changes on that?
That's a possibility. I really can't anticipate yet because it is so new to us. You know, just to remind everybody, this year is the first year we've pulled our kindergarten start age back from being five by November 1st. So, we have two months of the so-called "brr babies" for November, December, that we were concentrating on for our first time doing a preschool program. Next year, you will pull it back to September 1st, five years, five years old by September 1st to start school. So, that is about 400 youngsters. And while you're going to see our enrollment numbers go down this year, you'll pick them back up within the next two years.
Thank you.
No, I think we all support that. So, Aldo, if I'm just doing these numbers quick in my head, if we were close to 3.3 and we're spending 2.1, is about 1.2, is that a fair number to say that--
Yes.
--is still in the pot prior to the next meeting? So, having said that, I'd kind of like to respond to something Mr. D'Agostino said. I don't think 15 to 20 MTAs and paras makes a huge impact system-wide. So, Superintendent, if you don't have any objection, I'd like to propose to the committee that we increase line number nine by 200,000 and make it 600,000 instead of 400,000. That would still leave us $1 million remaining for the finance meeting on the 28th, but I think with the same approach as the teachers, I think if we, the more bodies we can know that we definitely have back in the classrooms, then there'll be less for us to deal with come September. But I'll open up the floor to discussion on that. Okay, Ms. Plant?
Would just be if you would want us to do that this evening? Or, I mean, is the 28th too close to that? Would you want to gather some information about where you're going to need them, where they will be going?
Well, I was going to have discussions with the principals when they returned. And to be perfectly honest with you, I mean, I said it to you at the last meeting, there were a number of things the principals talked about. I would say number one was the support staff. I mean, obviously, they want a staff in front of them having appropriate class sizes, but they were truly understaffed. sizes. But they were truly understaffed. I mean, I can tell you principals that were covering classes, you know, principals that were sweeping floors. I mean, you know, I could go on and on with some of the stories of what happened last year. It was very, very difficult. I still don't know how we got through the school year. I will start my convocation with certainly congratulating the teachers, the staff members that really went that extra mile to, to really get us through. And you know that, a very difficult year. So, you know, to turn away, I was trying to be very cautious of the classroom. That was where I want to make sure as the numbers creep up, especially where we have relocated students. This is a critical time in the next couple of weeks. The principals are back on Monday. But it's certainly not money that wouldn't be put to good use in our schools.
So it's safe to say if we made it 600, you would easily know exactly where they're going?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, I'll work with the principals upon their return. Dr. Moran and her staff will start to take a look at where the cuts are. And we'll try to support the buildings with that additional person, not necessarily a sped person, but this would be a person in the building for coverage, for additional support.
I, there's no doubt in my mind that we need MTAs at the middle school level and we need paras at the elementary school level. Mr. Gormly?
Positions, well, people really, not just positions. Would we immediately be able to bring back from the parent MTA layoff list? Because I know a lot of people, they move on. So we're going to have to go through a job ad.
We're hiring at this point there. We're through, there's no list at this point.
Okay, that's what I thought. All right.
Yeah. So we have, job ads are going out right now for a number of our positions that we presently had, special education positions. So we have, I'm sure it's out on school spring. So if there are people out there, we had even talked at one point about today during our executive team meeting, about possibly in early September, having a job fair if need be. You know, having something up at the high school where we encourage people, MTA, you need a bachelor's degree, you know, to come onboard. It does not necessarily mean a teaching license. Many people go on and get their teaching license or are waiting for the teaching license. Para professionals, we welcome you to come onboard. A high school diploma, you need to pass a para protest, but we'll work with you on all of those things. So if there are people out there that enjoy working with children, there's professional development, there's opportunities, there's benefits. You know, we have people that, whether they are MTAs or paras, that are with us for 20 and 30 years. So it's a wonderful opportunity if you see yourself working with young children, middle school children. And we do have some high school opportunities, not as many.
Miss Plant?
We've talked before about how we really want to increase diversity in our teaching staff. If we are hiring, is, how can we reach, is this something you're going to consider before you put out these ads, these job fairs, how we can reach a more diverse group of candidates?
Well, that's a good question because Dr. Moran heads up and they meet on a monthly basis. And it's been difficult. We have a diversity task force. And they have had job fairs. They reach out to many organizations where we have, you know, diversity in our community, diversity languages, cultures, every way that you can think of. So I think they would be pleased to bring this information back and try to assist us with things that they've already, and connections they've already developed. We did have a job fair, Dr. Moran, last April. But again, you know, we had a budget where we were laying people off. It wasn't, probably the time of year wasn't a great time of year, which is why I just mentioned, maybe what we can do is put something together, not only our job ads out there, but start to encourage people through flyers, certainly through word of mouth, and also with the organizations that we have connections with.
Great. Thank you.
So Aldo, just one quick question that I recognize. So if we go to the 600,000 from 400,000 in MTAs in Paris, that maybe gets us from 15 to 20, maybe to 20 to 25?
That's what I was going to elaborate on.
Give us an estimate on the number.
Probably bring you exactly to like 20 or 25. But in the same respect, when I did my numbers, I kind of estimated a health insurance number for Mr. Condon. So as we add more bodies back, the number, the overall available balance may be tweaked a little bit because he's going to estimate on his end for the health insurance, for the additional. Now we're, we've gone from, from no paras this morning, we're at 25 paras. And even if they all had health insurance, it could be about $14,000 each, could be $350,000 in health insurance costs. So again, we don't know until we hire them what it's going to be. But he factors a small amount in his formula for a number of hires each year. So I'll bring it up with him tomorrow.
The teachers were calling back, I'll get health insurance too, right?
Yes. Everyone gets health insurance. Some, with the younger teacher, a lot of teachers stay on their, their parents' plan until they're age 26. So there's no cost to us. And then again, a younger teacher is not married, no children yet. Again, there's a single plan, which a single plan is around $15,000 a year. Again, 75% paid by the city, 25% paid by the employee. Then you have, you know, as you begin a family, now you go to a family plan, which is about $24,000 a year.
Right.
Again, split 75, 25. So the costs come in. That's why when we have layoffs and you lose a lot of your younger teachers, you actually lose a lot of money that goes into the health insurance trust fund that's never actually used because younger people don't require as much health insurance.
Right.
So it hurts you when you lay them off.
Yep.
Hurts the overall pool.
I guess the point I make to the committee is if we're talking 24, 25 paras and MTAs, that's barely one per building. Barely over one per building. It's not a lot. Mr. D'Agostino?
Mr. Petronio's point, if I, I just want to make sure I'm right on this. Even if we put the extra 200,000 in and we then need 250,000 for health insurance for them, and we approved the 250,000 for middle school sports, intramurals, we'd still have $300,000 not accounted for, for anything else that-
Okay, so I want to caution, I want to caution everybody. And again, we want to get classrooms staffed. We want support staff. We have a curriculum audit that we cut, we cut from technology. So there are a lot of other things. I wanted to get school up and going and then we would sit and have discussions. So I think there are a number of things in the mix. I think it's a, a great discussion.
I wasn't saying we put the middle school sports in now. I'm just saying that, but if we were to do that, we still have, it's not like, you know, you mentioned the healthcare costs for the MTAs in paras. I don't see how we're going to run without them, you know. And again, to the mayor's point, it's, we're only getting barely one per building. We still, it, we, it's, we still have some flexibility even if we were to try and do middle school sports on the 28th. We still, like, we haven't gone to the last dollar here. If I'm not mistaken, we still have three to 400.
It's not going to the last dollar. There are just, I think, we, we need to look at a, a number of other items I did not bring up tonight. I just want to be transparent that when we sit and talk, we had $1 million. I heard and have heard it from a number of you, and I understand and support certainly opportunities for kids. But there are just some other items. So again, I, I think it's good that we're going to have a finance committee meeting. I'll make sure you have all of that information.
Well, if they're going to be, if you're going to bring additional requests forward that aren't in front of us now, then can we put the five extra teaching positions on hold so we have those to look at that money with those requests on the 28th?
Yes, you can. I just, again, didn't know what I would need before I started school. So we'd be doing it very quickly on the 28th. And again, that's fine. If, if we need a position before-
I'm just trying to think how to hedge a little money.
Yep, that's fine.
What if we did two instead of five? So you know, you can at least have a couple more.
Thank you.
Is that all right?
That would be helpful. Yes.
I'll open up the floor for that discussion with the committee. What if we did two extra, two reserve additional positions instead of five right now, just to leave a little bit more money on the table? Do we have a chance to review the other requests that the superintendent's going to bring forward at the next meeting?
We spent it all. We were recalling teachers.
Yeah. You're talking about a reserve fund. So when we went through-
Additional personnel.
Contingency, I'm sorry.
Two lines, one for certified, one for, we, we took it all in.
Yeah. Better to, at that point there, better to keep teachers, yeah. We always do that, that, in a normal budget, we would always have those line items. For a student moves in, you need a para, you need an additional support staff, teachers, same thing. We've always had those line items. That's why we were trying to build back the budget, even some of the things that I haven't mentioned at this point. These, this is not anything new. You know, technology, these are all the cuts that we've made. It's really kind of building back the budget to support our students.
Okay. You can have the floor, Mr. D'Agostino.
Aldo, so we would be, line item number, or item number five would be reduced to 84,000? It's 42 each?
Yes.
Okay.
Aldo, you're supposed to be doing the math for us. So-
So in other words, what does that leave in the-
116 is the savings.
Back in.
190. No.
Was it 116 or 126?
So it looks like we saved 126 on that line item, but we're spending 200 on the other. So the difference is 74,000. So $2,178,050? We'll give Aldo a little room to tweak it afterwards.
$2,178,050.
Like that? Thank you.
It's good.
The county major.
Very good.
All right. Any other suggestions? Or are we at something? I think we have a little bit of flexibility if we're going to meet again on the 28th. So my goal here is just to try to leave us a little flexibility. So anything? All right. So I think what we have in front of us now is the superintendent's proposed priority recalls. The change is being on line five, there'd be two additional reserve positions instead of five. And on line nine, we're increasing from 400,000 to 600,000 for MTAs in paras. And then we're adding a line 10 to recall four custodians, but assuming no net cost after savings from unemployment and overtime. So go ahead, Miss Plant.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the priorities as listed on the FY19 priority list, with the change made to line five, change being two reserve teaching positions for the amount of 82,000 and a change to line nine to the amount of $600,000. And also in addition to line 10, bringing back four custodians.
And they would just, I think it's 84,000 for line five.
I'm sorry, I wrote that down wrong as well. So 84,000.
That's okay. We got it. Okay. Motion's been made properly second. All in favor? Approved unanimously.